Right. We will call the regular meeting of March 7, 2023 to order. Please stand for the question.
The Budge Legion Institute is a body of the United States of America, and is a republic for which it stands one nation under God, and just for the liberty and justice of our.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Harbaugh. Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
And Mr. Thompson.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7, 2023?
I'll move.
A second. Sorry.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
One wishing to give a board member report this evening?
Yeah.
Oh, of course, absolutely. You want to focus in on that? Today's cover is titled Red Fox from Jackson Hoon, who is a first grader at South Elementary. Good work, Jackson. It's very nice.
Good job. Do you want else wishing to give a board member report this evening? All right, we'll move to public participation. We have one registered speaker this evening. Is it Holly Riegel? Riegel?
That works.
Second time's a charm. Okay, so you'll have five minutes to address the board.
All right. Do you guys mind if I pull a chair up?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate this. All right, I do have some papers with you guys. I do not have enough copies. May I do apologize? Thank you kindly.
You're welcome. You have?
I have.
Okay.
Take one of each and then send them out.
I'll go ahead and start while it's being passed out. All right, well, good evening, members of the board. I'm here to talk to you today about implementing an anti-racism initiative in our school system. As you know, we've had an increase in racial issues in our schools, and it is something that we can no longer turn a blind eye to. In Madison School specifically, we have seen a growing number of incidents fueled by racism. Incidents that involve but are not limited to racial slurs being yelled at students in the middle school hallways in between class changes, and the use of racial slurs by a formerly trusted school counselor. Using the N-word, as I will refer to it, is deeply offensive and highly inappropriate in any context. It is a racial slur that has a long history of being used as a weapon to oppress, degrade, and dehumanize Black people. A school counselor should know the importance of remaining professional and using language that conveys respect and understanding to all students regardless of their race or ethnicity. Using this word is unacceptable. Using this word leads to a hostile and uncomfortable learning environment for all students in the school. An anti-racism initiative would help to expose our students to different cultures and perspectives, as well as provide them with the skills and knowledge needed to combat racism and injustice. It would also help to create a more welcoming and inclusive environment in our schools. Transparent and honest communication between all members of this organization is of the utmost, utmost importance, from students to teachers, to administrators, to the members of the school board. In the incident previously described involving the middle school counselor, there appeared to have been a breakdown in communication, and not all parties were or are aware of the incident or how student safety and well-being is being addressed following this issue. That is why, as one of the first steps in this initiative, we urge the board to create a new system for communicating and reporting incidents of racism so that all parties are aware and adequately updated on the outcomes and proposed solutions. It is our responsibility as a community and as educators to ensure that our students are learning an environment that is free from racism and discrimination. An anti-racist racism initiative is the first step to creating a more equitable and tolerable schools, a tolerant school system. I have attached clips of a conversation I had with just five people. Two out of the five people had stories to share about racism occurring in our middle school. As you can see, when questioned, one person states, "My son is in the seventh grade," and he says everyone called them the N-word. He hears it quite often, and I believe it is due to where we live and how the parents were raising them. And then you can see below it as well, another conversation. I'm just seeing this. My niece is very dark complected, and she has been called a wetback and a board jumper on the school bus recently. The child is so young, she did not even know what these slurs meant. And also, their son is an eighth grader, and he hears the N-word before school at breakfast very often. It bothers him a lot, and he has told administrators and has confronted them, and nothing has happened. I also, if you flip, I outline an anti-racism initiative, just a bare bones agenda. One, any incidents of racism need to be reported or are reported to the school must be taken seriously and act upon swiftly. Students need to be encouraged to step in, step up and report. Two, all reported incidences of racism must be documented and reported to the appropriate school authorities. Three, a racism incident report form must be made available to all students, staff, and families. So that way they have the ability to turn this in as well, if they do not feel comfortable talking to somebody directly. This school must provide support to those who have experienced racism, including counseling and other appropriate services as needed. Six, this school must take appropriate disciplinary actions against those found to have engaged in racism. Seven, this school must ensure that appropriate preventative measures are taken to avoid future incidents, incidents of racism. Eight, the final one, this school must ensure that all students, staff, and families are educated on the effects of racism and strategies on how to combat it. There are several racial sensitivity classes that can even be taken online free for staff members.
Break your time. It's about five minutes.
All right.
We will absolutely.
Thank you.
Material that you have prepared.
I appreciate that.
Or some recommendations of the treasurer?
Thank you. First up, I would like to recommend the approval of the February 2023 financial statements.
I'll move. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up, I would like to recommend the approval of the Amatral Grant Fund 007-9,000. It will be used for professional development.
I'll move. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I would like to recommend the approval of the following donations. A generous donation of $500 from Richard and Kathleen Ingles to the Ingles O W O C Scholarship Fund. A generous donation of $1,000 from Madison Take Down Boosters Club to the Ted Ranson Scholarship Fund. A generous donation of $1,000 from Shirley Heine to the Ashton Heine Scholarship Fund. A generous donation of $50 from Wayne Balaque, I hope I pronounced that right, to the Ashton Heine Scholarship Fund. A generous donation of $6,572 from several anonymous donors to the Ashton Heine Scholarship Fund. And a generous donation of $500 from Susan Leach to the Robert Leach Educational Memorial.
I'll move. A second.
Any discussion?
I'm just, I, you know, I say this almost every meeting because we always have a great deal of donations to accept and all of these, every one of them, a scholarship fund. It's fantastic. So thank you, all of you generous donors. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The reports of the administrative team.
Well, I would like to start this evening by introducing Erin Keener, who is a senior at Madison High School. And she just recently completed her Gold Award. And she's going to talk a little bit about the project tonight that we're going to give her a resolution for. For those in the audience that are familiar, Girl Scouts, their highest award is the Gold Award, much like the Scouts, formerly known as the Boy Scouts. The Eagle Scout is their highest award. So there's a lot of work, preparation, planning that goes into it. So Erin, I'm going to turn it over to you because a little later in the meeting, we're going to have a resolution for you. So go ahead.
Well, hello. My name is Erin Keener, and like Ms. Smith said, I'm a recent recipient of the Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest award you can achieve in Girl Scouts. For three years, I targeted sustaining our pollinator population across Lake County and Giaca County. Through my three years of helping our pollinators, I was able to work with the MHS Ecology Class, Arthur Holden Leadership Institute, and a 4-H Club out in Giaca County. Throughout my project, I had a couple gardens placed. Some of my biggest ones were at the Giaca County Fairgrounds, so by the pond. I have one outside of the high school, and then around the middle school, I was able to work with AHLI a lot. I went on one of their field trip days, and I had taken old reused pallets that I had been, that had been given to me and donated by a variety of stores around us. And I was able to tear those apart, rebuild them, and have AHLI put them together, and then now they use them around the schools, and they're just butterfly houses. So reuse, reuse, or use, reuse, recycle. So I am super grateful for the opportunity that I had, and everyone was so willing to help me. All the donations I received from a variety of nurseries around, Love and Lavender Farms was a great one. Middle Ridge was another great one. I'm just really grateful for the opportunity I was given.
How many hours?
Um, 92 and .55, I believe, was logged.
Thirty-eight seconds.
That's just, because I'm sure there were some that wasn't logged.
They are very specific about travel times not included. So from bouncing back from schools to all the way out to Giaca County to meeting with everyone else, none of that was logged. That's certainly time.
How did you come up with the idea for the program?
Um, I've always been incredibly outdoorsy, and I think it was just fitting for me to expose myself and learn a little bit more about pollinators and nature of us.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Great job. Took a lot of dedication on your part, too. Very impressive.
I think you got your public speaking badge, too.
And it is appropriate, I think, that you have a Gold Award winner here during Women's History.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about the deficit reduction plan that is on the agenda this evening. I'm just going to share what I, I wrote out to the staff a little earlier because I think it encapsulates everything that I need to talk about regarding the plan, and then I'll go through the letter that I emailed you earlier today with some of the key pieces of our plan. For as long as I've been superintendent, even when I was an assistant, the district has had to file a three-year deficit reduction plan with the Ohio Department of Education. So what happens? We submit a forecast in November, and then year three almost always shows a deficit. I think maybe there was one time after we passed the levy in 2017 that we didn't have to show that deficit. So there may be one year that I had to miss. But I've done 10 or 11 of these letters. So in years past, the only requirement is that the superintendent, treasurer, and board president had to sign the plan. This year, the board has also had to approve it. First and foremost, as I've shared with you throughout the process, the action today does not mean the plan is happening because as of today, there are too many of your variables. Okay? Does not mean we are going to do everything in the plan as approved today. It is a snapshot in time. And I say that not just for the board, but for the community because there are so many things that are going to change in the next three months alone. This is March. We're in a budget year. By June 30th, we will know where we land. We have no clue today where we're going to land. We know that the governor has, you know, said he wants to keep the fair school funding formula, but we're now arguing at what level of base cost to the districts will they use? Will they use 2018 numbers? Will they use 2020 numbers? Will they use 22, 22 numbers? The government, governor has said hold it at 2018, which really means with all the inflation and all the values, not a lot more money in the coffers. He has said, though, he wants to fund SROs for the district and has come up with a number that gets us in his budget about $225,000 more than what we have right now in the board.
Which type of an SRO is?
School Resource Officer. So that's where he's at at step one. But now it's going to go to the House, and the House has got all sorts of things going on. They've got that House Bill one that I wrote about in Friday's newsletter that is looking at crazy things with taxes and tax rates and holding the state income tax rate at 2.75% and pushing it back on the property tax zone. Not a good thing for schools anywhere in the state, whether you're a wealthy school system or not.
Yeah, I just recently saw something about Solen.
Yes, I think I might have put that in the news.
It might have been from you. Yeah, Solen coming out with how very concerned that they are and how it's going to drastically affect them. Now, I mean, it's, you know, all of, every budget has been drastically affecting us for years. So, you know, we already know how that feels. But I understand completely what you're saying because, you know, a lot can change in three years' time. I mean, we don't know what our enrollment will be. We could have a huge influx of enrollment.
Exactly.
That would help us greatly. We could have, you know, massive amount of people leaving. You know, we have no idea how, what are, what things are going to look like in three years. So, and, and the fact that they make us do this when, when nobody has any, nobody can predict the future here, but I understand. So, yes.
They, they, they make it a little more challenging each and every time. But I will say that the, because the people from the State Department worked really well with us. Barb Marklin and Kim Richard, I mean, having done this so long, I tend to push back a little bit because I'm a pretty strong personality when I'm fired up about something that I think isn't, it's an exercise that makes us look at our budget. But when you're as lean as we are, there's not a day, as I told you with Mike, and there's not a day that I don't talk to Sarah every day about money. So it's, it's not like we're oblivious to the financial situation of this district. Their proposals, you know, so goes to the House, they'll, they'll do their thing. They'll run a comparison with the governor. Then it'll go to the Senate. The Senate will do their thing. And then you would think, okay, they're going to have to come to some agreement somehow. And there is a conference committee that's literally five or six people in a room that hash out the budget. And that doesn't happen, and usually into the last week in June. And because of House Bill one, because there's also the voucher bill going on, there's a variety of indicators that are happening. I think we'll go to the last week in June. We remember in Governor Stewine's very first budget, and he had a Republican House and a Republican Senate. He's a Republican. We didn't have a budget till the middle of July. So that's always a possibility, too, which is often hard to plan. So I set that table because a lot of things can change. We also don't have the health insurance rates, so we don't know what that's going to do to the, to the forecast. There's, there's a lot of, like I said, variables out there. The deficit projected in FY '25, which is year five of the forecast, is, was a $1.6 million deficit that we had to eliminate. So we really had to look at what, what we could do. We have been very fortunate. Not that we're losing good people, but that we've had a lot of our, several staff retirements that weren't accounted for in the forecast. And so through attrition, you know, hiring at, you know, teacher zero on the base would be the plan, and preferably maybe not replacing some. Again, those decisions are in the plan because we had to put them there, but they are nowhere near final. And I say that again because I don't want people panicked. So we, we were able to do quite a bit of it through attrition. Increase in fees, school fees is a recommendation. But again, those things make sense because costs have gone up. So a 10% increase in school fees covers the shipping, the handling of, of the supplies. Again, we're looking, asking for an increase next year in pay to participate fees. I will come at a future meeting with a schedule for that. But again, that is because costs have gone up. Staff costs have gone up, transportation costs have gone up, fuel costs have gone up. So when things go up and the general fund can't absorb it, we, we need to, you know, increase the cost of doing those things. Like I said, this is, this is pretty much the plan. I've shared it with you. We've also eliminated a couple positions here. You know, Sarah had three staff members at the start of this school year. We, one resigned, and we did not replace. We did an elimination of our EMIS, which is the data reporting person here in the district, and we've outsourced that to significant savings. So, you know, we're looking constantly for ways to reevaluate how we spend our funds. I think it's important to know, as I tell the state, every time we do this activity, we continue to keep this district afloat. And we continue to provide the best education we can to the students that come into our buildings each and every day because we have dedicated staff members. You know, I've said it over and over. You know, I've said it over and over again, our teachers, they are some of the best around and they, they work in this district because they truly love this community and what they can do, as well as our support staff. You know, they are, they are some pretty dedicated people. So like I said, I don't like doing these. This is not my favorite activity. When I finished with Barb Markland, I said, I'll continue next year, you know, because I don't anticipate it getting any better. I hope it gets better. And I hope that I don't have to enact these pieces. And it's somewhere down the line, this board's going to have to take a serious look at the extracurricular co-curricular program as to, does it go to full-blown pay to participate? I don't know if that's the answer. But it's in the plan as a, as a recommendation. And it was a recommendation from the performance auditors last year. So, you know, we tried to.
It's been a recommendation from the performance auditors every year.
I know, every five years because we only do those five years.
I mean, but every single time that we've had it done, yes, they have.
Now, does each sport have a different figure with it where, you know, I mean?
Yep. Each sport costs differently depending upon the sport, you know, the more, but also the larger the sport, the more that cost can be spread over more people. That's one way to do it. Another way to do it is to set flat costs. That, you know, so we're going to have to analyze the best way to look at how we proceed. I know a neighboring district ten or eleven years ago, when they did full pay to participate, like Swimmer District, Riverside, they did per sport. So they did the actual cost per sport and then said, this is what you have to pay to participate. I'm hoping we don't get them. Right, all of those pieces and parts. We don't use vans because we don't own vans. So we don't have that luxury. So that's the plan. It's on for approval tonight. It's not, like I said, this is my least favorite activity of the year. But I needed to review it with you this evening. A quick camera update because I know we've been talking about this. We are two-thirds of the way completed. We are at the mercy of the wiring people. They come in, they do a few, they do a few more jobs. I would anticipate within the next month we'll be wrapped up with that. And then finally, on my report, we are looking at several grants. Two of them are safety that we'll be working on in the next month and another one is for, you know, helping students with various supports that is through our title program. So we'll be applying for those. And that is my report this evening, Dave.
I have a couple of professional development offerings that are happening, happening around the district. Both are around the area of literacy. Our middle school English Language Arts teachers are going to be taking a deeper dive into StudySync, which is the, the series that we purchased for them a year and a half ago. So they've been using it, getting into it, and now they're going to kind of circle back and, and and really dig deeper. And specifically, they're looking for ways to try to gear instruction to meet the various needs of all the kids in their classroom. So the kids who are struggling, the, the gifted kids who, you know, may be ahead of some other kids, but still need to get at least a year's worth of growth. They want to try to figure out how to use these materials to the, to their best, you know, as well as we can and get the most from them. There will be a couple two-hour virtual sessions that will be done after school with the group of middle school English Language Arts teachers. And then some, some independent work that's going to be facilitated by our gifted coordinator with them in between sessions to try to look at, you know, how they can support students who are gifted. Gifted funding will pay for this training for us and that's going to happen most likely in the month of April. We've got some requests in for, for training days. So that's exciting for that group. You've heard us talk about letters now for about seven years. Letters is the the platform that we started off with over here at North for learning about the science of reading and how kids learn to read and, and really kind of, you know, learning that how the development happens with reading and what has to happen before the next thing can happen and at what age should those things be happening more and and we've got all but seventeen of our K to three teachers trained in this. The seventeen that aren't have come in over the past two years and we haven't been able to to provide the training because we haven't been able to provide substitute teachers for them to, to be released, to be able to get this done. It, it's a two-year process. As you know, from our, our teachers throughout the district, it's a deep, deep dive. I think it's more intense than any graduate course I ever took. So you know, we have to provide some, some time for them to do that. So thankfully, you know, that was the grant that we were able to get from Martha Holden Jennings that is supporting that, as well as one of the other federal programs grant is going to support this. So these seventeen folks are going to go through eight learning modules over the next year and a half. We're going to get through two before the end of this school year and they'll get to the remaining six next year. And then anyone new who comes on board in those grade levels will have to be trained as well. We want to make sure that they are, they have the same training as their colleagues so that, you know, an experience in classroom A is similar to the experience in classroom B, C, and D and and that way we have consistency in our program. So, so that's very exciting. They, they also get some face-to-face time with national presenters through this. And those things will be happening after school and and so that's going to be, and our literacy coach, Lisa Spence, is going to support a lot of the independent stuff that we do in-house and then we'll, we'll meet with the, the presenters from, from Lexia, which is the company that offers this. So big things happening with literacy. The only last thing I wanted to talk about is I meet regularly with our, our school, with our transportation system. So that includes community bus service as well as our bus mechanics. And, you know, we want to make sure we're communicating well, we're working well together, we're sort of anticipating needs as we go through things. And it's been going very well, very well, good communication. We, we celebrated in our last meeting the fact that we are making service. We're making service when it's very difficult to make service. We have shortages of drivers and that's one of our concerns. We have really only a couple spare buses and so making sure that those buses are running is, is a real concern. But we hear from our, our athletic teams that go out to contests, we've heard it all year. We get there, we wait for the other school to get there, even if it's their, their home facility because our transportation service gets them there, theirs doesn't. So, so we celebrate making service. Our concerns, we do have some new buses on order that we, we placed an order for earlier this school year. We're hoping they come in in April and that will be helpful for new buses, but we also know that at the same time, as buses come in, others are going out from, from end of, end of life. And so we're always on the lookout for good quality buses, even if they're, they're used to make sure that we we have a fleet that can take our kids safely and some spares in, in the event that we need to pull one off the road to have something fixed.
I, I want to add to that because one of the things that also that we have not done in my eight years as a superintendent and it's, it continues to be a testament to especially Joey in the last five years, our, our maintenance trucks, we have not purchased a maintenance truck. And some of them, they, they look absolutely horrible, but they run. But at some point, you know, that is something that we, we need to plan for as well.
You say maintenance trucks, are they like plows on them?
The ones that plow, the ones that drive around this district fixing things all, you know, year long. So it is it is critical. And, you know, in our plan, we don't even address the fact that we have, you know, we do have a couple of roofs that we're going to need to talk about. And again, it's piecemeal because we don't have the means to do everything that needs to be done. You know, we, we run very tight.
If I could jump in with one more thing on that real quickly, we also are in need of drivers. So when a driver comes into our organization, they go through a lot of training to earn their CDL license and during that time they'll work as an attendant on the bus, but it takes a while to get through that process. So like everybody else around, we are struggling to have enough people to drive the buses, but we're, we're still, we've been making it and working some magic. Yes.
I have a couple of questions. One, can you define what making service is? How do we determine that we're making service?
That we, that we are able to pick up students every day from, from school, bring them from home, bring them to school and get them back home. Now, there have been a few times, I, I could say probably on one hand, that I've been called and told I'm going to put these two routes together today because otherwise we're not going to make service. But in overall, you know, our regular routes, if you ride bus for Route eleven, Route eleven is going to pick you up and bring you home.
When we say making service, though, is there something about, you know, they have to be, you know, in order to make service, they have to be to the school within X amount of time of that school opening or how do we define making service?
Yeah, I don't know that we have a, I mean, and, and there are situations where we have some real tight routes. So, I mean, this hap, this comes up all the time because people want to add on stops here and there and we usually won't do it because of our, our buses that run the early elementary routes also run, most of them also run the middle and high school route. So we do have a couple buses that will come in two minutes late, five minutes late. We, we get reports on, on the bus times, you know, daily, but yeah, it's very tight. And a, a train like stopped on, like it was last, I think yesterday morning, will slow, will slow things down. Or a student, or a student who's at their door rather than out by the, by the road, you know, or five of those students. So, yeah, it's, it's very tight and we don't always hit the time that we would want them to be there.
And then in these meetings, have we discussed, like, how are we looking in the next? How many buses are we looking that we're going to need to be replaced within the next few years? Do we have any idea?
Well, we created.
We kind of need to start planning on that way longer than.
Yeah, we, we created a, we created a bus schedule. We did this a couple of years ago. All of the buses were listed. Their current age, their current mileage and the expected approximate, expected time that they will go out of service. The problem is there was a period of time, a good length of time when nothing was bought. And since then, we've been getting a few buses a year. We've picked up a few used buses here and there where we can find them of good value. But it's still that balancing act as, as new ones come in, the old ones are going out. We'd love to be able to find a few extra that we could bring in and give us a little extra padding.
I would like to clarify that since I've been in this chair, we have purchased buses every year. It's of some type of bus, whether new or used. Because at the end of the day, the only person that can get fined because it's in state statute, if a bus does not, is not fit to drive, is me.
Right. So I guess what I'm, and, and we may not know the answer right now, but I would just like to get an idea of what we're looking at because I, I know we got four new buses this time around. But typically, we only do about two a year, do we not?
The, the permanent improvement levy, which is a, is it a one mil, I think? One mil levy collects at the rate that it was voted in on. So it's not collecting at the three hundred thousand per mil that it would be worth in today's money. It's, it's collecting at a hundred and eighty thousand. A bus is about a hundred and five thousand. So we can purchase one bus a year with that money.
Okay. And we've been fortunate that we've been getting grants that will help us to pay for those buses.
Right now in the state budget, there is no transportation funding, but that could change.
Yeah, let's hope it does.
It's a big lobby.
So if we're looking at, you know, one to two buses a year, typically, I, I would just like to know if maybe, you know, in the next meeting or next couple meetings, you know, over the next five years, how many buses are we really looking at that we're going to need to replace? Because we need to start planning for those replacements.
Yeah, I, I can look at our, the schedule that we created and it'll, it'll give us our estimate anyhow, you know.
Right.
And thankfully, you know, Joe White, our, our mechanic is pretty good at keeping things running. We're, 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 we're very lucky there.
Thank you very much.
I sure do. Okay, I, so kind of piggybacking off of Dave, we've had some opportunities for the special education staff and also the aides to get some additional professional development, especially dealing with difficult behaviors. It's been very difficult to find subs as Dave mentioned, so it would be wonderful to have more of our staff members go, but because we are seeing, as I've mentioned, an increase in the, the behaviors and the trauma that the students have, we really need to try to get as much support for the teachers that we can. So there's an upcoming professional development, which I think is going to be really beneficial that I have at least two or three staff members from each building going. So that's exciting because we are really trying to, to find the best ways that we can help our most neediest, you know, students, especially because they right now are, you know, off of the COVID, you know, swing. And we have really seen some kindergarten, especially behaviors, our preschool, these are all of the kids that were kind of home without interventions and trying to, you know, kind of catch them up and, and address that. So I really applaud the staff for all that they're doing and then just trying to get them some more. Today I was in a meeting for the graduation for our special education students. So we monitor, you know, throughout the year, our graduation and the kids and the staff at the high school is amazing with spreadsheets and everything because, as you're aware, graduation requirements have changed probably every year in the last, you know, five years or so. And it is becoming, while in one sentence, the state has tried to make it better for students who have disabilities graduate without having to be exempted, it also presents a lot of other hoops to jump through if they can't make it through the traditional pathway. The state has also, because the state of Ohio has one of the lowest graduation rates, they have started a new tracking of at-risk students and, you know, on track for graduation. And that's going to have to be another additional piece that we'll have to start tracking. And so there is a, a grant that we're a part of that's going to help with that. But today I was working with the guidance counselors and trying to figure out, you know, how many different ways we can get students through. So that was kind of a tough thing and it's something that we're going to be working on, especially as these new requirements hopefully stay the same for the next year or two that we can really wrap our heads around it.
Yeah, I think we're in year two because we adopted those requirements last year and I, they have not changed. So I'm thinking they're going to stay the same for me.
Yeah. And there is another community forum, which we are a part of. There is, it's kind of a a trial, both Fairport and Madison are working together with the ESC. And it's called a community forum. And as I've talked about probably throughout the last couple of years, we are talking about our social, emotional and the kind of supports that we need for our students. And trying to come up with, you know, we have, oh, this is happening or this is happening. But it's been really hard to have one targeted, you know, plan that we would follow. So the ESC has come up and they got a grant, which then we became a part of with Fairport. And so when we say community forum, it's about bringing partnerships. And I don't know if United Way, I think they may be a part of it in some way. So we have somebody that's working with us and we've come up with, we kind of did a little diagram today of how we wanted to, what our focus was going to be and how we could kind of achieve it. And so we have three areas. It's family engagement, after-school programs and triage for student support. So those are three big areas. We have to, we're probably only going to be able to choose one, but what this partnership is going to do is connect. And so the person that we have, she's And so the person that we have, she's kind of doing the research and the legwork. And so there's a meeting on Monday that is gonna have all of the partnerships. So Crossroads, you know, Signature Health and the library, I think, and other agencies in Lake County that they can figure out ways that we can kind of help each other. And so one of the things that I was talking about today was we really need some kind of after-school programs. We have such success when, and interest when we do our tutoring, you know, for third grade reading guarantee and that. And so it would be wonderful if we could just have community partners come in, like just for game night or game, you know, after schools, you know, play with, you know, play with the kids or whatever, kind of have targeted events. And finding ways to have that and then outreach for our families. And that is again, been another big struggle that we see a lot of grandparents who are now in charge, who have their, their grandchildren and very specific targeted. We have a lot of aunts and uncles too, so trying to get programs for them, even just having, you know, them come in and learn how to use Infinite Campus. Or just making sure that we can kind of breach the gap that they may be feeling because they don't always answer the phone for us. But if they're able to see from someone else. So I'm really excited to see that a lot of our PDIS, which, you know, we're trying to do our positive behavior instructional supports. And this is really piggybacking off of that. So there's a representative from every school working with me and, well, probably two from every school. So we're trying to get this going. So probably next year we'll have it kind of have a good plan moving forward and how we're gonna use our resources. I also finally had the opportunity, I went to Broadmoor last Friday. And it was great because they have the Bobcats and they haven't had, this is the first year since COVID. So the Bobcats are the Broadmoore's basketball team. And so it's all adaptive, you know, any student adaptive phys ed. And some of the kids are in wheelchairs and some of the kids are very, you know, skilled or have different disabilities. And then they play the local high school basketball teams. And it is one of the most, I'm getting like tingles, I'll probably cry too. But it was, it's, I have always thought of all the school districts that I've worked in, that Madison is so inclusive. In the way that to see, because some of the kids that were at Broadmoore's team actually were in Madison schools at one point. And so it was so cute because they recognized each other. And one or two of our kids actually took the wheelchair from the aide and then they were pushing the kids around. I mean, it was so, I'm sorry. It was just, it was, but it's so, but I, I just feel that Madison, because we have our programs and I think because of the community and what I have seen, we have, and then what we do with Project Unified, this was like personified because you see these kids, these basketball players, you know, and to see that. And then holding hands, like the one was holding hands with one of our students because he can't walk really well. So it was a really uplifting kind of moment that shows you that we do have wonderful kids. And especially when it comes to being a very inclusive towards those with disabilities. So that was a big perk to my day.
That's right. Yeah. And I'm assuming that you also, I know that you're talking about Broadmoor right now. I can just absolutely see how emotional you are about these kids. And then it's wonderful. That makes you the perfect person to have the position that you are in in Madison. So thank you very, very much.
I did also, this was another positive too, which one of our students graduated, aged out. He was 22 and it happened to be his birthday. And so I went to the ceremony and just to see the growth, because that's another program that we have for our students. It's the Rave Program. And so it's a work opportunity and to see, cause I was at the high school when he first started and to see him become this man who has a job. And the job, I mean, it's just, there are so many fantastic things in Lake County. And our students are very fortunate to have the opportunities that they have and to have the support. And then also the support of their, their peers.
So as I was gonna say, I'm assuming that you were also at the Project Unified basketball game that we just recently had. Were you there?
I was not. I was out of town.
Okay. Well, and that's okay.
I've been-
Cause I know that you would have been there.
Oh, I always told ya. No, no, no. I always won with the pictures and crying.
Yeah. Flowers. Yeah. No, we were, that's all, sorry. It's wonderful. And for those of you, it's, cause there might be people watching right now that don't even know what Project Unified is. And it's where our kids get together and they, our special needs kids play basketball with our teams, our, our high school basketball teams. And all the kids come in and they all pack the stands and watch them and root for them. And many of them buy the T-shirts to show their support and it's just a really wonderful event.
And that's all student-led.
That's a student-led initiative. I want to think, was it? Was it, was it, was it Henry Aspel that started that? Was she the one that did the very first one?
Yes. Yeah, and she's now a mom. Wonderful. Yeah.
But, um, yes, it's been going on for many years and it's really a wonderful event. It's, it's very moving to watch. So yeah.
I do have one more comment on my presentation because I would be remiss. On the agenda, I added another resolution this evening for Matt Byers. I had an opportunity to talk to him this morning, Chief Byers, and his last day is the 15th. So I wanted to make sure it was on this agenda. I just have, I can't say enough about Chief Byers. He and I have worked very closely together. We actually, he became chief the same time I became superintendent. And we have developed this fabulous partnership that, and a personal friendship that I will greatly miss. He's, he's been an asset to the schools. He's helped us, you know, find our SROs. And he hasn't had an easy time of that, as you know, in the last couple of years with people moving in and out. But, you know, he and I have worked together on various issues over the eight years together. And he will be missed. They do not have his replacement name yet. But Lieutenant Perk will be the person that I work with and contact. And I've worked with her on several things over the years as well. Hopefully, you know, not gonna work all as well and I don't need to contact her for anything. But it will be, it's, it's sad to see Chief Lee, if he is going on to a second, second career. I think with the sheriff's office, so. All right. Are you ready for the recommendations then? Under the employment contract section of the agenda this evening, I'm asking you to accept the following resignations, to accept the resignation of Lindsay Fiore, North Elementary School teacher, effective the end of the 2023, 24 contract year, to accept with regret the retirement resignation of Doug Thomas, Madison Middle School Science teacher, effective July 31st, 2023, after 25 years of service to the district. Accept with regret the retirement resignation of Diana Missich, South Elementary School Second Grade Teacher, effective June 1st, 2023, after 25 years of service to the district. And accept the retirement resignation of Ted Wagner, Madison High School Math teacher, effective May 29th, 2023, actually, May 31st. We should probably change that because his retirement would be effective June 1st, after 30 years of service to the district with the intent to rehire pursuant to all ORC procedures. We're, we're asking you to approve, approve the following unpaid leave. Request of Jennifer Miller, Madison Middle School Nutrition Services cashier, effective March 1st, 2023. So March 16th, 2023. We're asking you to employ Jacqueline Char, Char Smith as a three-hour educational assistant playground at North Elementary, effective February 13th, 2023. Deploy Leanna Ruff as a three-hour non-union pre-K aide at Madison Mid, pre-K, effective February 27th, 2023. Deploy Heather Welch as a building substitute, effective February 15th, 2023. Employ Constance Dophie as an educational assistant cafeteria at Madison Middle School, effective March 8th, 2023. And the following persons as casual day-to-day substitutes and at the board approved rate of compensation for the 2023, 22, 23 school year. Anthony Davis, Brian Miller, and Ken Foley. We're asking you to approve the following transfers. Transfer Ashley Govna from a three-hour position as an educational assistant playground at North Elementary School to a 6.25 hour position as a special education aide at North Elementary School, effective February 6th, 2023. To a transfer Alicia Somenez from a three-hour position as an educational playground at South Elementary School to a six-and-a-quarter hour position as a special needs assistant at South Elementary School, effective February 13th, 2023. Transfer Karen Alley from a 6.2 hour position as a special needs assistant at South Elementary to a six-and-a-half hour position as a special needs assistant autism at South Elementary, effective January 30th, 2023. Give transfer Donna Zuluski from a three-and-a-half hour position as an educational aid cafeteria at Madison Middle School to a six-hour position as a special needs assistant at pre-K, effective February 21st, 2023. Transfer Jacqueline Claus from a three-hour non-union pre-K aide to a three-hour educational assistant playground at South Elementary School, effective February 27th, 2023. And that's the personnel actions.
I'll move. My second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And we're asking for your approval of the deficit reduction plan this evening to approve the deficit reduction plan narrative and workbook for the FY25 as required under Ohio law and provide authorization of board superintendent, board president, superintendent and treasurer to submit the plan to the Ohio Department of Education as found on file.
I'll move.
My second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the next item is to reapprove, we do this in January, but they asked us to do it for the state again in March, the intra-district and intra-district open enrollment policies. So we're asking you to continue the policy of intra-district and intra-district open enrollment pursuant to board policies by 5113 and 5112.01.
I'll move.
My second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then there are two resolutions to approve this evening. And since Erin did a much better job than I could, probably reading the whole resolution, I'm just going to read the title of the resolution. That, if that's okay. A resolution recognizing and commending Erin Keener for earning the Girl Scout Gold Award. And then a resolution recognizing the retirement of Matt Byers from Madison County.
I'll move.
I'll move.
My second. Any discussion?
Yes. Erin, you really have made all of us very proud and I'm sure you made your mom extremely proud as well. You are a magnificent young lady and this is just unbelievable, the amount of work that you put into this. So congratulations. You're welcome. And Matt Byers, I have, I've had a lot of interaction with him over the years. He is just a wonderful, he's really a wonderful human being that truly cares. He was a, a good officer. He's been a good chief. And I'm gonna be sad to see him go, but I absolutely wish him well. And thank you for all your years of service to Madison.
So I, I have a funny story that I'll share about Matt Byers. Cause it's, you know, when his officers write reports, his mother once, I think, was an English teacher in the high school. Or was it the father, my father? I can't remember. One of his parents,
It's Mr. Byers.
Mr. Byers was an English teacher. And so he said, I, my officers hate when I, you know, give them back their reports with the red pen on them. Collaborated on various statements through the years and I was an English teacher. So he, and he'd start correcting me and I said, boy, you are pretty good. So don't know if I'll get that in the next chief or not, but you know, I, I liked that story. Because I, I can't have that forever. I'd get in trouble as well.
You know, really, I think if the next one has even half the amount of passion and dedication that Chief Byers has had for Madison, we won't, we won't be able to go wrong. He's just been really wonderful.
Great guy. Yes. You know, I'm very proud of Erin and I'm glad that she was able to be here tonight and made sure we, we moved it up so that she could be here because she's going on the band trip to Disney. Oh, fun. Two weeks.
What instrument do you play?
Center saxophone.
Wow. Oh, a saxophone. Nice.
Is there anything you don't do?
What college are you going to? Can't go wrong with the zips. It's on my door. Yeah.
All right. Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. And then the consent calendar, we have several items this evening. The first is to approve a contract between Madison Local School District and Cleveland Heights University Heights for the education of the students outside the Madison Local School District for the 2022, 23 school year. To approve the student enrichment trip for Madison High School students' travel to Costa Rica, to Panama, coastal Caribbean experience, beginning during the summer of 2025, accompanied by their chaperones Becky Barton and Kelly Chandler pursuant to board policy 2340. And to authorize that all student participation fees will be imposed on participating students pursuant to board policy 7152. And to authorize any entering into an agreement with EF Educational Tours, a student travel company based in Cambridge, Massachusetts, to provide courier and related service for the trip, subject to the limitations of ORC 3301-83-16. Enacting on behalf of the board, the superintendent or designated shall conduct signature on any agreement upon the availability of funds for the trip from sources other than the school district's general fund and final approval for the trip upon a demonstrated interest by reasonable number of participating selected students. And then to enter into a consultant services contract, Jeremy Sullivan is percussion instructor for Madison Band students, effective August 1st, 2022, through October 31st, 2022, at a cost of $1,400 at no cost to the board. And to approve the following volunteer coaches, Jerome Chima, Joe Medlin, and Samantha Cofflin. And to clarify, at no cost to the board, do you have the mention previous from the band?
I'll move. My second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I'm reading that travel in its entirety. So people understand that we aren't paying for the trip in any way.
Oh, no. No, well, it's going and it's, I think it's gonna cost me an arm.
And second, this is the second trip because the trip that they're going on in the summer of '24 already filled and has a waitlist. So they asked if they could plan a second trip to see if that would accommodate some of the other interests. So, you know, it's a good experience for our students to be able to do that. And I'm glad that coming out of the pandemic, these are opportunities for our students again.
We do the roll call?
No, we haven't.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes? Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So for executive session tonight, Angela's at three and four.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose, purposes of conferences with an attorney concerning disputes involving pending or imminent board action and preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employers?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Will you not plan to conduct any business when we return from executive session other than to a agreement? So we stand by this.